We'll call the meeting of the Minot City Council to order today for Monday, October 4, 2021. It is 5:30 in the afternoon. I would just once again remind everyone in the audience and at the dais to go ahead and silence your electronic devices so we can keep the distractions down to a minimum, please. Roll call.
Evans?
Here.
Dancer?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padugula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Sitma?
Here. Number two is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three on our agenda this afternoon is a COVID update. First District Health Unit, I believe Lisa Klut is on the telephone with us. Look to Derek for verification of that.
If so.
Lisa, are you on the phone with us today?
I am. I can barely hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Lisa. Go ahead and if you would, just go ahead and identify yourself and continue on with your report, please.
Okay. I'm Lisa Klut, Executive Officer at First District Health Unit. I sent Derek a spreadsheet earlier today, and I am hoping he has that up for you to see. This is our daily data that we keep, and this is as of noon today. So I will focus on Ward County, but you can see the other counties that we serve. Today, our cases came in at 22. Those are from yesterday's numbers. Typically, we see a slower day on a Monday. But the numbers to look at is your active cases. So in Ward County today, you are at 302 active cases. A year ago, on the same date, you were at 185 active cases, and your 14-day positivity rate is 8.3%. You can look at the totals for First District and the other counties that we serve. Those are important, obviously, because they impact the regional healthcare system also. The vaccinations, you can see where we're at. In Ward County, we have given 25,919 vaccinations. Those, again, reminding you do not include the Air Force Base vaccinations. Vaccinations, the 12 and up, we had increased uptake in the number, and that's at 49.1%. The 18 and up is 51.9%, and 65 and above is at 78.2%. If you scroll down, you can see the cases by age groups. These are not county-specific. They are all of First District numbers, and so right now, you'll see the highest number of cases are in our 10- to 19-year-olds, 132 in the last 14 days. And then the 20- to 29-year-olds, 113. 30- to 39-year-olds, 121. And you can see, as the ages go up, for the most part, those numbers are going down. One of the concerning numbers is the 50 in the 0- to 9-year-old group also. So statewide, I'm always cautious on giving these numbers because they are never totally accurate. But I did just get off the phone with Trinity, and I can give you some more specific numbers there. But the current hospitalizations have gone up. They are at 157. Current ICU is at 24. This is where I don't feel this number is really reflecting it because it doesn't include all of the out-of-state people that are in the hospital. And so it is showing that there is availability of 11.44%. When you talk about breakthrough cases, the way they track that is since vaccination began in 121420, North Dakota has had 46,338 COVID cases identified. Unvaccinated people of that 46,000, unvaccinated were 40,719. And so we have had 5,619 cases that would be stated as breaking through the vaccine. We do know, and we've shown, that the vaccine is preventing death and some hospitalizations. However, that does not mean that they, because the Delta variant has come along since the original vaccine, we have had some breakthrough cases. And no vaccine is 100% effective. So those are just your specific numbers. Talking a little bit about vaccinations, there's a lot going on with that right now. If you are, just a minute here, let me pull it up. Okay. People eligible for a booster right now are adults who got Pfizer and are age 65 or older, have one or more underlying health conditions, or those who work in high-risk jobs can get a booster dose six months after completing their second Pfizer shot. So at this time, the Moderna, if you were vaccinated with the Moderna, the good news is that on October 15th and 16th, I believe those are the dates, Moderna has applied, and the FDA will be hearing and looking at those possible recommendations for a booster with Moderna. We also know that on, I believe it was the last week in October, I think it's the 26th of October, they will be meeting the FDA on possible vaccinations that would be available for the 5- to 11-year-olds. Typically, if the FDA does approve, those vaccines are then most likely ready to go the following week. We do know that there will be, with the Moderna, the dosages will change and so forth, or be smaller doses. But, so stay tuned. But those are the dates that you can be watching for additional information if you are wanting a booster with the Moderna or a vaccination for your 5- to 11-year-old. That's where those are at. The other important group that they are encouraging vaccinations with is pregnant women right now. In North Dakota, we have had 13 pregnant women hospitalized with COVID. All of those 13 were unvaccinated. You can receive vaccination at any time in your pregnancy, and so if that is something people are concerned about, they should talk to their OB-GYN in regards to that. In regards to Trinity, today, they are sitting with 30 COVID patients. That has been inching up. Last week, they were typically in that 20- to 25 range. Today, they've increased, and you'll see statewide that those hospitalizations have increased. Half a dozen of those people are in ICU, and all of those people in ICU are on vents. There have been, has been rationing of monoclonal treatments, and they received additional doses this afternoon. They know that they won't have enough for everybody that would be eligible for that this week, but they are, we still have them available. So they should contact their doctor. Last week, on Friday, I believe it was, the governor did a press conference with the, with physicians from the six major hospitals around the state. And Dr. Sather from Trinity was included in that. They are pleading with people to, every day, they are in a situation of balancing and moving patients around. They are pleading with people to get the vaccination to slow this spread, or practice mitigation strategies. Last Thursday night, I know that across those six hospitals, there were 40 patients boarded in the ER waiting for beds. So at this point, we still have beds in there making it due, but sometimes that means that they are waiting in ERs or being transferred, if that's at all possible. So the Trinity Hospital has not diverted, or has not been on diversion where they are not taking any patients at this time. So I guess, oh, and the other thing is, last week, because of the high number of people that they did have on vents, I think on Friday, we were talking, and they had 15 people on vents. They did access the state cash for more vents, and those were provided to Trinity from the state. So they have increased their vent capability. I think that's all I have for a report, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate the information. Any questions for the Executive Officer, Ms. Klut, at this time? Appreciate it again, Ms. Klut. We'll look for another report likely next month.
All righty. Thank you very much.
On to item number four. This is the Mayor's Report. We will go ahead and start off with that as soon as I can get the program forwarded here. Here we go. The report for my activities in September, taking a look at just a couple of them here on the 8th. The discussion for the NOS Long-Term Management Meeting, that was a discussion with not only myself, but the City Manager, or Public Works Director, and others, with some state officials, taking a look at what that most likely is going to, well, hopefully, look like, and also what our concerns with, were with the, some of the proposals. Also, on the 8th, we did have a Commerce Legislative Update with James Lehman. Unfortunately, I think there was only one of our legislators who was able to make that meeting, but some great information kind of on what is ongoing within the state. And then, of course, on the 11th was the Firefighter Citizens Academy. You can see some of the different activities that were taking place there. If you take a look in the far right, if you look way down on the bottom, you'll see Alderman Padugula, his beard probably sticking out from one of those pictures. But he did join on that day of activities on Saturday. I want to thank the Chief and the rest of the staff that helped with that. And just for everyone's sake, I was meant to be upside down rappelling down the side of the building there as part of the process. But no, it was a great day, and I would strongly encourage anyone who has never participated in that to do so. You get to run the Jaws of Life. We did run the Jaws of Life. We did rappelling. We also did some of the different rescue techniques, the high-pressure hose, I guess, procedure, and then also going up on the big truck ladder and a few other things. But great information and some really good insight into what our firefighters do each and every day as part of their training. Moving on, Task Force 21 Monthly Meeting. Did have a couple of flood protection home acquisitions throughout the month. As I mentioned prior, we did have a Ward County Weed Board Quarterly Meeting, and then Governor's Conference Call.
Is now exiting.
Governor's Conference Call for COVID 2021. Just for everyone's understanding on this, this is kind of a roundtable discussion of what some of the other cities and counties were doing around the state in terms of testing, what their capacities were. Very similar to, Minot is doing very similar to what many other communities are. Also, with some discussion on the potential role that the National Guard would play once again here if numbers did continue to climb. One significant difference between this time around and last time around with the surge in testing demand is the, many National Guard units are deployed right now. So the unavailability of immediate access, of course, as we were kind of informed, that some of those units could be recalled back home if needed to do so. The 22nd through the 24th, Task Force 21, I joined them out in Washington, DC. Some of the highlights involved meetings with Senator Kramer and Senator Hoven regarding the Minot Air Force Base missions. Of course, what we're discussing is not only the current missions, but also the replacement of the ICBM fleet with GBSD, which is the Ground-Based Strategic Defense, and then, of course, the re-engineering of the B-52 bombers. We did have a reception for Minot alumni military leadership, as I would call it. It's very surprising at just how many high-ranking United States Air Force officials, both past and present, have gone on from Minot, from their, say, first tour of duty, first point of service, onto some amazing, amazing careers that are continuing. As a matter of, to point on the top right, Commander of Air Force Global Strike Command, Tony Cotton, four-star general of Minot Air Force Base, was stationed here in 1986 as a missileer. Now, he is the Commander of Air Force Global Strike Command. Absolutely amazing meeting. And then, for the Nuclear Triad Symposium on that Friday, some very good insight into the world of what the nuclear posture is, including that, of course, focusing on Russia and China. If anybody has paid attention to what is going on in the news today and yesterday, China has been flying warplanes over Taiwan, which was actually some of the discussion that took place at that symposium. But as we go through with the Task Force 21 and continuing posturing for our missions, it's very important to understand what those missions are and also continue lobbying for that. Moving forward, then, the very next day, we did have the Special City Council meeting here on that Saturday, where Senator Hoven was here to announce the $9.84 million, part of that defense grant, to help with flood control. And then, directly after that, was Senator Hoven also announcing and kind of going into greater detail of what the B-52 bomber upgrade engine contract that was going out to Rolls-Royce. So that was great to see that that contract was, that bid was awarded, so that that process will move forward. Then, on the 29th, we did have a ribbon-cutting down at Credence on their location on Central Avenue, another downtown Main Street business that has been, a building that has been completely renovated, and some great things going on within that building. Any questions on my different, as I did forget to mention, I had about approximately 24 other meetings regarding regular city business, emails, phone calls, and others. Any questions on any what I had in my report? If not, I do have a couple of proclamations for today. Minot Mayor proclaims October 3rd through the 9th as Fire Protection Week, whereas the City of Minot is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires kill more than 2,770 people in the United States. In 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association, the fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, Minot residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas, Minot residents will make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, the Minot Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Minot residents who are responsive to the public education measures are better able to take the personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, in 2021, Fire Protection Week theme, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety," serves to remind us its importance to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Therefore, I, Sean Sitma, the Mayor of Minot, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Protection Week in Minot, and I urge all residents of Minot to learn the sounds of fire safety and support the public safety activities and efforts of the Minot Fire Department. The second proclamation that I do have for tonight is, Minot Mayor proclaims October 15th as White Canes Safety Day. Whereas, the use of white canes or guide dog is commonly recognized and identified as mobility aids that people who are blind or have low vision rely on to travel independently. And whereas, White Canes Safety Day originated through the approval of a joint resolution by Congress on October 6, 1964, which is designated October 15th of each year as White Canes Safety Day. And whereas, it is important to remind one another of White Canes Safety Day, that North Dakota traffic statutes require drivers of motor vehicles to yield the right of way to individual utilizing, utilizing a visible cane or a guide dog. Whereas, chartered as an independent nonprofit in 1936, the North Dakota Association of the Blind strongly advocates for observance of our state's white cane safety laws and provisions of white cane training for people with a sight impairment so they can travel independently with confidence wherever they need to go in their daily lives. And whereas, to coincide with White Canes Safety Day, the North Dakota Vision Services will be hosting its walk for Vision Olympics on October 10, 2021. Now, therefore, I, Sean Sitma, the Mayor of Minot, do hereby proclaim October 15, 2021, as the White Canes Safety Day in Minot, and I urge all residents of Minot to observe and spread the awareness of issues impacting the visually impaired. One last reminder that there is an event that will be going on Saturday, October 16, called Sports in the Dark, and that is in association with the Proclamation of the White Canes Safety Day, runs from 3:00 to 5:00 at Polaris Park, and I believe that there is a little bit of a fee to participate in that. With that, that is the end of the proclamations and my report. I would now move on to City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You do have a fairly comprehensive report included in the council packet. It's also available to the public through the website. I don't have anything further to report outside of that memo, with the exception of I would like to introduce Jennifer Ekman. Today was her first day as our new Airport Director. She's here in the audience. If she could please stand. I was telling her earlier today that the two most important days is the first day and the morning after, to make sure they show up for the second day. So she showed up today, and I'm confident that she'll show up tomorrow as well. But we're excited to have her here, both as a part of the City of Minot organization and the airport, but also as a part of our community. And I'm sure her and her family will enjoy the community of Minot going forward. So unless the council has any further questions, that's all I have for my report this evening.
Any questions for our City Manager? Thank you, Mr. Stewart, and welcome, Jennifer. Number six is our City Attorney's Report.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I submitted a written report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions on a written report submitted to our, submitted for documentation?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. That takes us to our next section of our agenda this evening. This is consent items. There were 13 items originally listed on our agenda. Number 13 is being pulled from tonight's agenda. So we have 12 items for consideration before us.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Ross.
I move we approve all the items except item 7.13.
Motion to approve all items 7.1 through 7.12, as 13 has been pulled. Is there a second?
Second.
By Alderman Pittner. Discussion, Mr. City Manager, you had wanted to make a mention.
Yeah, just for the benefit of the council and the public, there is a number of 13 was pulled. This is a little bit of a carryover from the last council meeting. This had to do with a transfer of a liquor license in an attempt to try and be business-friendly. We went ahead and put it on the agenda, hoping that staff had completed all inspections, and it would be ready for approval tonight. But unfortunately, that wasn't able to be completed. There's still one more inspection that's needed by city staff to verify the appropriateness of that transfer. And so that's why this has been requested to be pulled from the agenda this evening. Although, if possible, we will try to put it on the agenda for the next special council meeting next Monday, if it's ready for that agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any discussion on the motion to approve all items as recommended? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes. Yes.
Sitma.
Evans.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padraig Gula.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Our next section of our agenda is the action items. 8.1 is John Zakian Technical Consulting Contract. Recently, Mr. John Zakian provided notice of his resignation as a full-time employee of the City of Minot due to personal reasons. Mr. Zakian has offered to enter into contract within, with the City of Minot to continue providing technical consulting regarding the CDBG and NDR processes for a six-month period to assist with the transition of expertise and knowledge. With only approximately 18 months remaining to complete the projects relating to the federal funding, it is unlikely a replacement could be found for the NDR program manager position. The recommendation to City Council was to approve a six-month contract with Mr. John Zakian in an amount to not to exceed $70,000.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Evans. Discussion on this in reference to the funding of $70,000. Just look for verification from our finance director that that will continue to come out of the NDR dollars that are associated with the management of that. Okay, yes, that is correct. Any discussion on the motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Is this the second time he's quit on us?
That is correct, Mr. Ross, although I did have a discussion with Mr. Zakian. With this one being personal reasons, he assured that it is moving towards retirement for those personal reasons, rather than what his previous reason was, was to move to Texas.
I just don't, I personally don't feel we need to reward somebody who's quit on us twice with a $70,000 contract. If he wants a contract, if he wants to work for us, he should still be an employee. And I'll follow that up by saying, in my time being on city council, there has not been one city employee who I've received more complaints about from residents, from vendors, and even staff. And so, you know, he did good while he was with us, other than stretching the truth on occasion, in my opinion, he did. Did it to my face. I just feel that our time with Mr. Zakian is finished, and we should move down the road. I think we have plenty of capable people within the city right now who can continue this project moving forward. So I will not be voting for this.
Further discussion on the motion to approve? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve, please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padraig Gula.
Yes.
Ross.
No.
Sitma.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to 8.2, Public Hearing, 2021 Renaissance Zone Development Plan and Time Extension. The Minot Renaissance Zone expires on November 7, 2021. The State of North Dakota allows the city to renew its program eligibility through the attached resolution for a period not to exceed five years. As condition of program approval, the attached development plan must be updated and adopted by the City of Minot and the State of North Dakota. We do have a couple of recommendations. Approve the City of Minot Renaissance Zone Development Plan and authorize staff to submit the development plan to the North Dakota Department of Community Services. And two, approve a resolution supporting a five-year time extension to all active Minot Renaissance Zone blocks in order to continue accepting new applications for benefits. We do have our Community Development Director, Mr. Brian Billingsley, up front with, I believe, some details in a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sitma and members of the council. For your consideration is the five-year extension of our Renaissance Zone program and a updated Renaissance Zone Development Plan. So to give you a little bit of background on our Renaissance Zone program for the newer aldermen and alderwomen that we have, and also for the general public that may not be aware of the program. It was established in 2001, so it turns 20 years old next month. And since that time, we've received 97 total applications. It was originally established in downtown Minot, but it has expanded since that time. It's gone northward into the southwest in recent years. The city government manages the property tax abatement that's attached to it. We are allowed to, to give an incentive of five years of no property taxes for people that meet these requirements. The state government offers state income tax incentives, historic tax credits, and investment tax credits. My office does not handle those. We simply ask, we simply act as a pass-through and submit the application to the state, and they completely handle that with the applicant. Give you some background on our Renaissance Zone. The map on the right-hand side is our current map of the Renaissance Zone. With our population of a little over 48,000, we're allowed to have 42 blocks within our Renaissance Zone. Based on the fact that every city in the state can have 34, plus for every 5,000 population, they can have one additional block. That brings us to 42 maximum. Right now, we have 40 and a half blocks that are designated, and government blocks count as a half a block. If you see on the map, like Block 7D, Block 8, Block 5, Block 11, Block 26B, those are considered half blocks because there is a government entity that owns a parcel of land within those blocks. So that's why we're at 40, we have a half a block, and they're at 40 and a half. Preparing for my presentation today, I noticed that Block 9, we can now take that off the map since the city purchased the east half of that block for the City Hall project. That block is completely under government ownership now and really has no business being on a Renaissance Zone. So I would suggest in the near future, we take that block off, and then we can go up to, we would have 40 blocks, 40 blocks in our Renaissance Zone and two blocks available to add. To give you some history on the Renaissance Zone, all the properties based in downtown and beige are, they were the original zone in 2001. That lighter yellow color was added in 2006. The dark green, the green on the, along North Broadway was added in 2010, along with the properties at the university and to the north there as well, that are now completed. In 2014, the properties in the turquoise blue was added to the Renaissance Zone block. 2015, the light green on the south end was added to the Renaissance Zone. And then we did a major expansion in 2020. We, we took 14 blocks out of the Renaissance Zone. We declared them as completed blocks in 2019. And in 2020, we added the blocks you see in red to the Renaissance Zone, to bring us to our current count of 40 and a half blocks throughout the city. The gray blocks are considered completed blocks. They were in the Renaissance Zone in the past, but they've been taken out. For example, the blocks in the northeast part of downtown were taken out because of, that's going to be a flood control project in that area, made no sense to offer tax breaks to an area that's, we're going to be buying out in the near future anyhow. So we took them out of the Renaissance Zone. The other blocks have been declared to complete, meaning they've already exhausted all their projects within them, so there is no reason to keep them onboard. It's a healthy exercise to do periodically. If a block is complete, you might also take it off, and then we can expand it elsewhere within the city. How is a property eligible for Renaissance Zone benefits? Non-residential properties, on the left-hand side, they have to invest 50% of their true and full value in order to be eligible to receive Renaissance Zone benefits. This is an actual case on the, on the left-hand side here, is case number M5, dating back to 2003. Their true and full value at the time, according to their paperwork, was $64,400. The property owner was required to invest at least $32,200 in improvements in that property in order to be eligible for the benefits. They chose to invest well over $400,000 into the, into, into that building in improvements. They requested a five-year property and income tax exemption, and today, their assessed value is a little over $1.8 million. On the right-hand side is a residential case. Residential properties only need to invest 20% of their full and true value, or true and full value into, into their property for improvements. This was a lot that was, that was damaged through the flood. The home was demolished. It was a vacant lot at the time, so it was only worth $21,000. So they had to invest 20% of that value, which was only $4,200. Obviously, for new construction, they invested a little over a quarter million dollars into the property. Today, it's worth $300,000. They did receive a five-year property and income, and investment tax exemption for this project. In non-residential zones, which would be the commercial zones that you'll find downtown and along North Broadway or Berdick, there's many, these are the expenses that are eligible for, for, for the program. On the exterior, roofing, doors, windows, weatherization, storefronts, brick masonry, cleaning, cornices, roof cables, awnings, and exterior painting. On the inside, it could be foundation or structural repairs, insulation, energy efficiency improvements, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, walls, insulation, and subflooring. I'll get into that a little bit later. On residential projects, it's mostly the same, except for they're not commercial in nature, there's no storefronts, but they can, they can repair a porch or a deck. And on the inside, it's virtually the same stairwells are included as well. Eligible expenses, the program does not cover floor coverings, like carpet or tile. That's considered basic maintenance to the building. The whole goal of the program is to, to do, to do improvements, it's going to extend the lifespan of the building. And floor covering is not, is not considered a lifespan expansion for the building. Any furnishings within the building, interior painting, cabinetry, and artwork. So you can't buy a Vincent Mangold painting, hang it in your living room, and ask for a five-year property tax exemption. There's a two-step approval process. There's a conditional approval and a final approval, and they both come before the Renaissance Zone Board and the city council for approval. So it starts out, the applicant will submit an application to my department. The city assessor will determine the full and true value, and that's the number we use for the, for the percentage. So it's 50% for commercial, 20% for residential. Staff determines if the application meets the program requirements. And then the application is presented to the Renaissance Zone Review Board for recommendation. And then after that, it goes to the city council where a public hearing is held, and then a decision's made here. And if it's approved, then we forward the application to the state of North Dakota for conditional approval. They will respond with a letter stating that they've approved the application. If they have not, then they'll respond back stating what, why they denied it, or what we need to do to bring it into compliance. And then after we receive that letter, the applicant can then begin the renovations on their property. Final approval starts with the applicant completes their work, and then they submit their invoices and photographs to my department. We'll check the invoices to ensure the expenses are eligible. And then the invoices and photographs are reviewed by the Renaissance Zone Review Board for recommendation, and then again, it goes before this body for a public hearing and a vote. And then the city assessor conducts a final walkthrough inspection, and then invoices and photographs are submitted to the state of North Dakota for final approval. And then paperwork is submitted by, I believe, the assessor's office to Ward County for the five-year property tax abatement, if it is approved. The development plan, I'm going to briefly go through the plan, the changes that were made to the plan. It was last revised in 2016. The plan spells out all the requirements for the, for the program, the management of the zone, the vision, the goals, the objectives, all the policies for non-residential and residential projects. All the credits, exemptions, and benefits are available. The criteria that we, we judge whether or not it's eligible for, for, for program approval. There's a fee schedule, the map of the zones in there, and then all, every property that's in the zone is inventoried within the plan. The changes that we've made with this plan include, we're going to now require enhanced landscaping on properties outside of the central business district. That can be found on page 14. Now, we're going to preserve fenestration, that, which is the opening of doors and windows on the exterior of the building, and historic buildings in the central business district. This is the new one that just came out from the, from the state. A property owner cannot use their, their time as labor. They basically cannot calculate their time towards a project. They have to use a third party for all their projects. We cannot, there's no way we can calculate a labor charge for somebody's work. So sweat equity cannot be used as an eligible expense. City council reserves the right to reject any project in which the benefit of the applicant outweighs the benefit of the community. That's on page 16. Non-conforming uses are ineligible. However, if they, they want to bring the property into compliance with current zoning standards, we would accept an application. We have added deadlines for the completion of work. We have some applications that are 10 years old that have conditional approval, but have never come through for final approval. The Renaissance Zone Review Board wanted to put some deadlines in here for people to get their work done as quickly as possible, but within a reasonable timeframe. They came up with having a three-year deadline for, for a property owner to complete their work, and then they can come back for a fourth year to, for, they can appeal for a fourth year before the Renaissance Zone Review Board, and then a fifth year before the city council. And then after that, their, their, their application expires, and they would probably have to reapply once again. Adding two members to the board is another thing that came from the Renaissance Zone Review Board. We currently have nine members on the board. MACEDC has an advisor on the board, but they're not in a voting position. The board would like to add them as a voting member, along with one member from the general public, so that would bring our number up from nine to 11. And then we've, we've updated all the data and timelines to be current to 2021. We did do some wordsmithing with the document, too. The five-year program time extension, this resolution was provided to me by the state of North Dakota that we have to approve before November 7, or November 7th of this year, that's when the program expires. So with your approval this evening or at a future meeting, I will forward this resolution to the state to extend our program another five years. And before I open this for questions in the public hearing, too, I'd like to share some of the success stories. And we've had 97 cases, and I'm not saying that only these cases are the success stories. We have many more than this. I don't want to take up too much time. But some examples are Planet Pizza on Broadway, was a vacant bakery building at one time. Many properties along Main Street, not just the winery on 15 South Main, but there are several properties on Main Street that have taken advantage of the program. Beaver Ridge, we've had five cases, all the commercial properties on the first floor applied, along with the apartment units up above. They all applied for, for these benefits and were approved back in 2013. The building where the Struggling Roosters located was a former warehouse that they went through in 2014. A vacant parking lot became an apartment complex also, right along Main Street in 2014. Gourmet Chef, that was an expansion, actually. It was a new, a new business at the time, but they did expand, and the Renaissance Zone helped them with their expansion. The NOTAC Building, these are, these are very recent ones that just opened within the past year or two. The NOTAC Building on Second Street Northeast is now open for business, and Prairie Sky Breeds, High Third, The Depot, Credence Energy, which the mayor brought up during his presentation earlier. Those are some of the most recent examples we have of Renaissance Zone projects. So with that, I stand available for your questions, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Any questions for our Community Development and Economic Director? Alderwoman Evans.
Quick question, Brian. When you send it to the North Dakota Department of Community Service, is that just for filing purposes? Like, they can't, can they do anything to it?
Mayor Sitma, Alderwoman Evans, basically, they review it to make sure it meets their standards as well.
Okay. But I'm assuming you've all.
Yep.
Done that.
They make sure that the public hearing was held. We have to show them the notice of the public hearing that was in the newspaper. We have to give them meeting minutes. I'm always pestering our city clerk for meeting minutes afterwards to send down to.
Right.
To Bismarck. There's a couple of other things that we need to provide to them as well, but it's, it doesn't take very long. Usually, within a couple of days, I'll have a response from the state.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions for Mr. Billingsley? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And as I mentioned at the beginning of this description, this is a public hearing. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the proposal and the recommendations that are before us this evening. Again, a call for a public hearing, anyone that can come forward and speak on this issue, either in favor, in opposition, or neutral. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council? Alderman Pittner.
Mayor, I move the.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Second. Motion to close the public hearing and approve the item with the recommendation, second by Alderman Janser. Discussion on the motion from the council. Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Our next item is 8.3, the Service Basin Planning Council request for second tier of funding. Service Basin Planning Council has exhausted the first round of funding for the Business Accelerator Fund. Service Basin Planning Council is required to formally request the remaining funds and receive council authorization. They will provide a presentation here this evening. I believe we have our finance director and a member of Service Basin Planning Council here. We do have two recommendations. Approve the use of the remaining grant funds and approve the amendment to the grant funding agreement between the city of Minot and Service Basin Planning Council, authorize the mayor to sign the amount. Our finance director, Mr. David Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to introduce this item and give you a little bit of a refresher on the background. Service Basin Planning Council had requested some funding from the Magic Fund back in 2019 for, to establish their Business Accelerator Fund, which is a revolving loan fund. That action was approved by both the Magic Fund Screening Committee as well as the city council. Part of that original agreement was that the funding would come in two tranches, and before Service Basin could get the second tranche of funding, they had to come in, back to the council and show that they had expended those funds and ask for the second round of funding. This, like I said, it was originally approved back in 2019 with COVID and things that came into play. It obviously delayed some of the funding, or, or some of the demand for funding through the Accelerator Fund. The city council did enter into an agreement that extended the length of time for the agreement to be in place through the end of 2022. Service Basin has now expended the first tranche of funding and is coming to the council to request the second round of funding, and they also have a couple of requests to modify the agreement further to allow for a larger loan through the Accelerator Fund, and also some administrative details on who approves the applications that come through their organization. So if the council agrees to the second wave of funding and approves that, then they would request the changes to the agreement, and there is a, an amendment that's attached to the item.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Any questions for Dave? Can't imagine, but, okay. We do have two recommendations before us. What are the wishes of the council? Alderman Olson.
Move approval on both items.
Motion to approve both recommendations.
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Alderman Janser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment, really. I think this is a good news story. You know, these funds are going out to organizations and helping to make, make them work and go, and this is good for our economy. Having been on the board of Service Basin Planning Council sometime back, they, they do a good job working with the financial community in order to make these things happen, and so I'm, I'm very supportive of this. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion. Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yep.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.4 is our next item. This is 4443 Work Order, Broadway Corridor Study Final Presentation. We do have a brief presentation of the Broadway Corridor Study that will be given tonight. Since the last council presentation, the following activities have occurred from both the Steering Committee meeting, compile the final and comprehensive report, and presentation to the North Dakota Department of Transportation Executive Team. We do have our traffic engineer, Mr. Stephen Jors, with us. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, after many steering committee meetings, presentations, public input opportunities, and reports, we've reached the end of the Broadway Corridor Study. Now, before I hand it over to Mike Pittner, I just want to say a few quick things about the report and the study. We aren't looking for a specific recommend, or recommended acceptance today on options. We are looking for merely to accept and file the Broadway Corridor Study. From there, staff will work on implementing and programming with the DOT, the recommendations of the study. Secondly, Mike and his team really stepped up to the plate on this study. This is one of the largest, if not the largest corridor study in recent DOT history. With COVID in the past year, his team has been really adaptable and really easy to work with on that. With that, I'll hand it over to Mike, and it looks like the presentation is already up there for you.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayors, member of the council. As Stefan mentioned, this is one of the most impactful corridor studies that I've seen in my career, and I, I spent my entire career working on corridor studies. There's few roadways that mean as much to a community as Broadway does to Minot. Within a half mile, we have one-third of Minot's population and one-half of Minot's businesses, and you can see the evolving characteristics of the corridor as we move from north to south. But I really want to give credit where it's due. I appreciate the kind of words that Stefan just mentioned, but really, these were the leaders on the project team. A lot of great guidance, really the compass to our entire project, Lance, Stefan, Brian, Alderman Janser, John McMartin, as well as a plethora of DOT involvement. And so it was a really cohesive and well-rounded team. I'm not going to spend much time on the technical details tonight. There's a lot of great information still available on the website. There's a lot of information buried in the reports. I just want to underscore that this was about 18 months of, of hard work that went into some of the ideas that we're going to show you here tonight. We did do a great deal of public involvement. Our first public input meeting, this was really right in, in the heat of COVID, and so we adapted to an online platform. We received a lot of great comments as the first phase of what the issues were to help really guide us into the alternatives phase. And then the alternatives phase, we developed kind of a custom tool to gather information. We're finding that with such a large corridor and so many different types of alternatives, that it was hard to gather feedback, and so we developed a unique platform. We also had a variety of different ways to get information. We had six focus groups specifically with different entities, primarily property owners, understanding that some of these improvements could have some direct impacts to those directly on the corridor. I would say it's probably the most robust corridor study engagement process that I've seen in North Dakota for sure. You can see this long list. I'm not going to read all these, but everything ranging from postcards directly to property owners, to lots of social media posts, podcasts, to even billboards along the corridor to really get the word out. We tried anything and everything in our power, and again, another kudos to the city for all the hard work and helping to support this. This was a lot of city hard work in, in this effort. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time on some of the areas of the corridor study that have the most imminent improvement suggestions. There's going to be some areas that I won't have time to cover, but I want to dive a little bit deeper in some of these areas. The first is the south segment, which we define as 25th Avenue South through the city limits to the south. And although we've had some recent facelifting on this segment, the underlying pavement conditions are really in poor overall conditions, and will need to be rebuilt in sometime in the near future. We also are completely devoid of pedestrian and bicycle facilities in this segment. We have a variety of different crash issues, very specific to the design of our frontage roads and the proximity to some of those larger intersections, 31st and 37th avenues. They're major bottlenecks. It creates a lot of friction, a lot of conflict points, really creating to, really a challenging intersection condition, and, and previously, there had been some, I'm trying to advance here. Stuck. Oh. There is a, a video coming up on the next slide. I might be slowing it down. We can just skip that one when we reopen it, whoever's helping me out with the mouse. But I'll keep talking through this. So the one unique aspect of a corridor study is that we don't end with specific recommendations that are only one answer, and the reason being is that NDOT has certain federal requirements in regarding that. There's still some environmental aspects that we need to work through, and so what we end up is with a package of different alternatives, and we discard, we basically discard the bad stuff, and we kind of rank the rest of it, and so we understand where we're headed. We understand the environmental aspects, but most importantly, we really connect with those most impacted. So here's a good example of a concept on the south side. So we are looking southbound, kind of looking in southeastbound in this example. And so this, we titled this the signalized parkway concept, really in, in the way that we have our frontage roads reconfigured. And so you can see that we pulled the frontage roads away from the central intersections to try to improve that safety and operational challenge we're having, turned them into one-ways, and allowed, you know, U-turny movements at the central intersections. And so what this allowed us to do was really improve those key bottlenecks along the corridor, improving our peak hour delay by 20% and our crash potential by 23%. And this was actually more beneficial than even widening the corridor was because of where our traffic was headed to and from. It's also, this concept, as you can see, also provides improved livability through a shared use path, and, and we can kind of double up that existing frontage road as an opportunity to really place some of those improvements. So my next slide, if it gets there, is going to be pretty similar to that concept. It's a, basically the same concept with the roundabout, the only difference being that the roundabout would facilitate some easier U-turn maneuvers to, for better access to and from the properties. Looks like we're frozen again. So as we look at the south segment, we, we did get a lot of great feedback related to this area, and we did have a lot of connectivity to the business owners in, in the area. And so what we had is through our survey process, we were able to get a lot of great feedback and found that almost the vast majority of everyone supported the various improvements. One, one of the three different concepts that we had presented through this process. As we looked at the technical comparison, there was a great deal of differentiation between the build improvements and the no-build improvements, really underscoring the need in this area between the ped bike, the poor operations, the safety, and also the pavement conditions. And so really, on a timing standpoint, for this segment, we had suggested a short-term, five years or less of improvements. I'm really starting to solicit some of those funding dollars from NDOT as soon as possible, just understanding the various needs. We also looked at making that key connection to, across US2, understanding that that is a major barrier for pedestrians, pedestrians and bicycles. Is there something I need to do to open the slideshow back up? She's still stuck.
Blink twice.
Okay. PDF, that'll work. All right. Here's kind of, I'm sure I described it even better than I illustrated it on these slides. I'm sure you just imagined exactly this graphic here in your head. So I'm going to talk through the middle segment quickly as well. The middle segment, which we defined as really the connection at that 20th Avenue South, north to 11th Avenue North. One of the, the comments we received quite a bit from the public was the challenge with the signal spacing. You get on the corridor, it feels like I'm hitting a lot of reds as I move through the area. But the big challenge we had on this stretch is that we also have similar challenges trying to get onto the corridor, and I really love this graphic on the, the left side of the screen here. The city collected turning movements into and out of each of the driveways along this stretch of the corridor to understand how many people were using this because of how challenging it is. And I think if you've ever been at one of these driveways, you know how hard it is to find a gap in traffic to get on the main traffic stream. And so what we were finding is that very low traffic volumes were occurring at any of the intermediate driveways, as people were finding different ways out, but were finding, you know, kind of the primary ways in, and it's just because of the delays that we were having. And so Can someone click on the PDF again for me? There you go. Thank you. So as we started to look at the access spacing along the corridor, a couple of things really started to stand out from a safety perspective. There was a clear correlation between the access density and the crashes per each stretch, and so you can see the, the direct correlation on this graphic at the top. The more access points we had, the higher crashes we had, and this is really the primary cause of our high crashes. And so we compared this to similar corridors across the straight, across the state, and found that the stretch between Burdick Expressway and 20th Avenue South had three times the expected, three times as many crashes as similar national highway corridors through urban, urban areas. From 11th Avenue North, the Burdick Expressway was about twice as high. We also had some major ped bike challenges. We had really a lack of buffer distance. We had driveways really in the corridors you're moving up and down, which created a lot of ADA noncompliance and challenges throughout the area if you have sight challenges or you're in a wheelchair. We also had a lack of right-of-way to be able to really fit and widen in this area. We also had three ped bike crashes per year, and what was interesting about those trends is we have pretty low amounts of traffic for ped and bike crossing the corridor because it is kind of an intimidating barrier, but also that most of these were occurring at signalized intersections as drivers were making left or right turns and not seeing where the ped and bike was occurring. And so that really stood out because you often think signals are really our best answer at improving ped bike conditions, and, and they often are if they're designed in the manner to really support those movements. And so our first range of improvements that looked for this stretch was really crossing enhancements. And so this is a package of three solutions really designed to minimize overall traffic disruptions, except for when there is a need. And so when a pedestrian or bicyclist come to cross, they press the push button, and then we give them their own phase to start, and we minimize those permitted lefts and right turns. And this would, this has been proven to reduce crashes anywhere from 60 to 80% at these locations, really making this a safer place to cross. We also looked in great deal at bike facilities, and this garnered a lot of interest at our virtual public input meetings. There's a lot of information here, and really, the overall topic kind of started to get a little bit out of scope and, and from just looking specifically at Broadway, but we wanted to make sure that we understood whether there was feasibility to have an alternative bike route on either the east or west side. And so we dug into a lot of different alternatives, and, but we really feel like this is one of those concepts that probably needs a little bit more marination and thought in a later phase. So as we looked at the stretch from a safety perspective, we started to break it down even a little bit further and look at opportunities to manage some of that access to try to fix our safety. And so you can see, we looked at a variety of different access management strategies, whether that be adding a median, or consolidating and relocating access points. And so here's a visualization of what some of those concepts would look and feel like on that south stretch kind of through the commercial areas. You can see that through the middle, we have a raised median. Depending on the design, we could have some nice aesthetics come into the design of that. We also highlighted in blue proposed some baggage road improvements. And so what this allows us to do is really provide some substantial safety benefits, and so we're showing upwards of almost 50% reduction in overall crashes as we eliminate those serious left turn and through movement crashes. If I may, if I was able to zoom in a little bit, I'd show you those, those little notes on the top right there. We're also able to reduce the overall delays by about 25% because we're just reducing all that friction that comes into it, and by funneling our traffic to strategic locations, we actually were able to warrant new traffic signals, which just helps actually improve access to and from some of those businesses. And that was really our goal, was to improve safety without having some major ramifications to all the businesses along the corridor. And so as we looked at our technical scouring, the bars on the top illustrate the, the benefits over the do-nothing, regardless of what access management design we had, we found that there were some pretty tremendous technical benefits, but certainly there were some notable costs that come with these types of improvements in the 13 to $14 million range, as we need to reconfigure that corridor to add that raised median, but a lot of that cost comes with those baggage roads. We also found what was interesting from the 11th Avenue to 20th Avenue South is we had, really from the online survey and the comments, almost entirely support of, of this stretch because of the high crash rates. Even our listening sessions had a lot of property owners, you know, really lament some of the access management, but understand the necessity to improve the safety on those stretches. And so for the segment between 11th and 20th, we suggested a short-term, five to 10 years, understanding that, that amount of funding would be also challenging to find, and so we tried to make it a little bit of a window. On the north stretch, it a little bit of a window. On the north stretch, we moved it to about 10 to 15 years, just understanding that that area had a little bit less of a crash challenge. And then finally, the other topics, the items that I wasn't able to address in this presentation are available on the website, movingbroadway.com. We dove into a variety of different US2 interchange concepts. We also included the north segment. And the reason why I didn't talk about that tonight is the needs just weren't as high. And so the timing really started to look into that 15 to 20-year range, maybe even beyond. And so that'll probably need to be reassessed as things change and evolve. But having a vision is helpful as you move forward to understand what you can and can't really fit into some of those spots. We also included an aesthetics plan, excuse me, an aesthetics plan and then 250 pages of fun, if you're really interested in, and a great read. So with that, I really appreciate the opportunity to present. I'm sorry that the slideshow wasn't working, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I think we managed to get through it without too much delay anyway. It's Mr. Bittner, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Bittner at this time? One of them that kept coming to my mind or top of mind every time a slide either was, I almost chuckled myself when I saw the roundabout after the barrage of comments that came from our one and only roundabout. But with all of the different scenarios, northern climate and snow removal, is all of that taken into consideration as some of the ideas are, I think, moved forward to?
Yeah, certainly, a lot of these concepts are not the favorites of a snowplow driver, but they have been proven very effective in similar climates. And the roundabouts specifically, we would be able to make sure that we look at options that could accommodate those types of items. And nothing we're showing hasn't been done in a similar setting before.
Thank you. Alderman Bittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Bittner, as far as, again, I know that you're not looking to make a recommendation from this body, but with, I guess to the mayor's question, a roundabout or some of those other designs, which design proved to have the greatest result on reducing friction and addressing some of the issues with the corridor?
Alderman Bittner, so it's a little complex from the standpoint that it almost evolved into multiple corridor studies with different packages of alternatives depending on what segment we looked at. And so if we're talking specifically on the south end, which we'd see as the most imminent, we certainly saw the most interest in that parkway design with the traffic signals. There's a lot of interest in that design because it really helped alleviate the safety, but it also had the greatest operational and safety benefits and the greatest support from the public and our leadership team as well. As we've evolved northbound, there's a variety of different access concepts for each area with each a little bit different interest depending on the level of impacts and costs and those types of things. But there was just a general support of a desire to improve safety while also understanding that those left turns onto the corridor are so challenging. And so people supported that. When we went into the project, we were curious to see how that would be received.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you, sir. From the council then, I'd be looking for a motion, again, just to recap, accept and file of the study. Alderman Janser.
I'd move that, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janser to accept and file the study. Second by Alderman Bittner, discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to accept and file the study. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That is the end of section eight. Onto number nine, this is personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on our agenda. I would ask that if you do come forward for personal appearances, to state your name and city of residence. One more time for call for personal appearances. Seeing none, we will move into our next section, which is the miscellaneous and discussion items. This is the presentation on approaches to the city animal services. We do have our city manager who has a presentation. And for anyone who is watching at home, the details of that slideshow are also attached as a PDF.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Alderman. We've had an issue come up recently as staff has been discussing that we need some direction from council on. But before we get into discussion of direction from council to staff, I kind of want to do a brief synopsis of what all is involved with regards to animal services, animal control, those types of things, similar to kind of what I did back in May with economic development. I kind of wanted to lay a good foundation for you as a governing body, but also for the community going forward. Of all that, it seems kind of simple on the surface, but when you get down and dig in, it becomes much more complex very quickly. So with that, the main issue and the main point here is, is as staff has dug into this over the recent weeks and months, we've discovered that currently there is no contract for services right now with regards to the Minot Pound establishing that legal relationship between Minot Veterinary Services Veterinary Clinic and the city of Minot. And so obviously with today's standards and those types of things and in form of transparency for the public on using taxpayer dollars, that's not how we want to do business. So ultimately, at the end of this, my recommendation is that in some shape or fashion, we need to enter into a contract with somebody to be able to conduct these services. So here's the outline. I'm going to go over some of the typical partners in this field of service that many communities often experience. We'll go over some typical considerations and challenges and trends within this area of service as well. I'll finish that up with the current situation here in Minot and the layout. And then we'll have some council discussion and opportunity for direction for the council to the staff. So typical major players or major approaches to this is first and foremost is a dog pound, which is what we currently have here. This is your minimum level of service. As you read city ordinances or state law, there's processes and procedures outlined that we have to abide by. Anytime we take an animal, which would be considered personal property, there's a process in place to protect the property owner and the animal and those types of things that we have to abide by. But a dog pound typically meets the minimum requirements and is the most cost-effective. The main goal here is to get animals back to their owners as quickly as possible. And these types of facilities are typically operated by a city and again, are least expensive. If you want to go up into a tier of service, the next tier is often an animal shelter. This is a greater amount of service and care as can be outlined here in the difference of the goals. The goal here is to save as many animals as possible and to find loving homes for them. This is going above and beyond the minimum level of service. These can be operated by a city, but most often are operated by a nonprofit organization. This could be similar to the Humane Society or here in Minot, equivalent would be the Suez Valley Animal Shelter. These typically have a higher cost of operation and maintenance because you're holding the animals for a longer period of time. And we'll talk a little bit more about that here and the oncoming trends. Some other significant partners, however, in this, and these often are used in conjunction with either a dog pound and/or an animal shelter, would be rescue groups and foster programs. These are typically run by volunteers. They volunteer their own time, resources, money, those types of things to do these types of things. Rescue groups and foster programs can be specific to breed or animal. So you may have some rescue groups that only deal with cats, or you may have a rescue group that only deals with German shepherds or greyhounds or those types of things because that's what they specialize in, that's what they're passionate about. But you do also have rescue groups or foster programs that can help with any animal. It just depends on the makeup, what they're designed for and what their passion is. Typical considerations and challenges and trends within here, first and foremost is animal welfare. What is the service expectation? For example, do you want to know kill shelter or not, which is becoming more and more of a trend across the country as animals become more a part of lives of people. There's more and more attention towards making sure that an animal shelter or pound is a no-kill facility. There's also policies and procedures necessary for maintaining a clean facility. So when you have them in your care, that you're operating it in a proper way, that you are not adding any undue stress or medical issues or emotional issues for the animal themselves specifically. Another big driving factor in this field of service is veterinary care. As is typical with a lot of professions now, as we see our large generation beginning to retire out, you know, transition and availability of professional experts in this field is becoming more and more difficult. And this is kind of a bit of a perfect storm because my observation has been is, is interest of animal welfare is at an all-time high than it's ever been, but we have less resources to help but deal with that right now. And so veterinarians, veterinarians are often in high demand, overworked, and little help or resource available to them. The additional challenges adds is if it's a city-owned facility and those types of things where typically we're trying to minimize costs and those types of things. You're asking a veterinarian to come and provide services at a minimal cost or at cost in their time and resources dedicated to where that comes out of sacrifice of things that could be considered more profitable for them as they deal with private clients and those types of things or agricultural clients where there's more return on their investment for their time in dealing with that. Main point being is that it can be difficult sometimes to find a vet, the partner in providing those veterinarian services to an animal shelter or a dog pound. And it's becoming harder and harder as time goes on. Another aspect here is animal control. And that is basically what we're talking about here is the collection of animals out in the public for animal control. Those are typically given as authoritative powers by state law to cities to be able to do this. This involves confiscation of animals, issuing sort of citations, et cetera. And then the question becomes from a legal liability standpoint, can you transfer that authority to someone that is not a city employee? But there are partnerships throughout the country where animal control is contracted out as part of the service contract. I have not had an opportunity to visit with the city attorney to delineate through North Dakota's laws and whether that's transferable or not. I know in Missouri, it was not a recommended action by the attorney there, but that may not hold true here in North Dakota, but I haven't had a chance to dig into that yet. Some other animal control issues here have to deal with, you know, we're dealing, animal control officers are dealing with different scenarios, whether it's a lost animal that just happened to get away from the property owner or the animal owner and then trying to match them back up to get that animal back to their home. Another is an abandoned animal where their owner no longer wants it and can't find a home for it and just turns it out on its own. And then you have feral issues where maybe they're abandoned animals or whatever, but they've established a colony and then the population grows through that. And so constant and continuing efforts in this area, come back to your spaying and neutering, trap neuter release programs, vaccination programs, microchipping, licensing requirements, these are all components. They're typically addressed in city ordinance and state law that add into the complexity of this issue when you're going forward. The main point being is if you're entering into a contract of services, what all are we expecting to receive back in service on this? And does it include these aspects going forward? Some cost considerations is the longer you retain an animal, the potential higher the cost. You have the daily maintenance and cleanliness of the facility, but also the longer they're there, the more opportunity there is for sickness or disease to be transferred from animal to animal. The longer they're there, the animal, in some ways, animals are just like people. They have emotional, mental challenges and have abandonment issues sometimes if they've been surrendered by an owner that they've lived with for years and don't understand what's going on. And so the longer they're in that facility, the more chance for these issues that require veterinary care and different things going forward, medications, et cetera. Already covered the second point here. Another issue and concern here has to do with volume. How many animals go through the facility on an annual basis? Obviously, this isn't rocket science, but the higher number of animals results in higher costs. And when you start adding in longer stays, the more that grows exponentially over time. You have the cost of space, number of kennels, amount of space needed, how you separate those animals out, how you quarantine animals, whether they've been identified as a vicious animal because they've bitten somebody or attacked another animal or et cetera. Those often aren't, you don't want to mix those into your population, so you got to keep them quarantined out separately. If they're ill, if they're sick, you need to quarantine them out as well to keep that from hopefully minimizing the spread to other animals in the facility, et cetera, et cetera. So these are some typical challenges and considerations as we go forward with this conversation, as we look at potentially securing a new contract. So Minot's current situation, I try to provide some quick links here to the pertinent state and city laws and ordinances here. I'm not going to go through them in significant amount here at this point, but if anyone wants to reference what state law requires and what city ordinance requires, those links are there and available. So the city of Minot has had a longstanding partnership with the Minot Vet Clinic. I would say going on decades. I do want to make the point here that my goal here is not to sever that relationship necessarily, nor do I want to undermine the years and decades of service that this business has provided, both to the city of Minot as an organization, but also to the community. So in no way, I hope that none of my remarks or efforts tonight are interpreted as an effort to sever that relationship. But at the end of the day, the city of Minot does not own a pound. We don't own a facility. We don't own a brick and mortar building that we operate in and contract out to someone to operate on our behalf. This facility is owned and operated currently by the Minot Vet Clinic and we contract with them to, one, retain the animals in accordance with state and state law and local ordinance, but they've also made the investment and own the kennels and the facility and operate that. And so they provide that as part of their arrangement with us at this point. To be honest with you, it's been difficult for staff to track down the last contract that was in place and approved, but the best we can find was some minutes of meetings back in the 90s. This was likely a result of during that timeframe is we would bid it out and there wasn't a lot of interest in it. And there wasn't a whole lot of point in going out and rebidding it and have the same entity respond back every time. And so it probably fell between the cracks at that point. Although things have changed since that point, I do think it's, it would be intelligent and recommended for us to bid that back out. And then typically you would bid that out every three to five years to make sure that you're reviewing the services, you're getting the needs and the expectations of the community met, but you're also doing it in a financially frugal manner, in a conscientious manner for the public and the taxpayer dollars. For some actual numbers here, the city has seen expenses ranging anywhere from $30,000 to $45,000 a year in the cost of pound services. These are directly related to the animal and what we get billed by Minot Vet Clinic each year as they conduct those services. In addition, we have the cost of the animal control officers that we have. We have, I believe, three officers right now, and those range anywhere from $107,000 to $137,000 a year by time you calculate the wage benefits, operations of vehicles and training and all those types of things. And when we talk about volume, we experience about 700 animals a year that go through the pound that our animal control officers are collecting and taking to the Minot Vet Clinic, which is a significant volume number of animals. So with that, that kind of lays, I think, the background. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the staff may have, or not the staff, I apologize, the council may have here with regards to this issue. Do you agree with the recommendation to secure a contract for service? And if so, what is the process that we need to go through? What's the service level expectations? Are we just simply contracting out pound services? Or are we looking to elevate and support community expectations when it comes to animal care and better animal shelters, et cetera? What considerations should be included? Are we contracting out animal control services? Are we retaining that with the police department? Are we going to require anything with regard to spaying and neutering and vaccinations, microchipping, licensing enforcement, those types of things? What are we doing for cost controls? What are the relationship requirements? As we talked about in the first slide, there's multiple different partners in this. And what do we require in partnership between? And what do we require in partnership between those different groups as part of the contract? Is, you know, veterinary care is a concern with regards to this? Volume and space requirements are of concern? I do want to say that in in conversation with this and Chief Klug and I have had a good amount of conversation and he's been the liaison with Minot Vet Clinic. One of my main concerns here is again, talking about the lack of availability of veterinarians and those types of things. The indication has been given to me that should the city bid this out, our current option will no longer be an option that the Minot Vet Clinic would likely not respond to a bid process. I think that has to do with some potential retirement coming at some point in the near future. I don't know what the the future of of the vet clinic looks like, or they're they have another vet lined up to take over the operations or what that looks like. But regardless, if that retirement were to occur, we'd probably be in that same boat here in the near future anyway. But I I do feel it's appropriate to to let the council know if we go through that process. And once we do that. Our current option is no will likely no longer be an option. And so with that being said, there's a couple of options and that is we can do a RFQ or RFP process that is typical and how we secure things. Although this is professional services, our current policies don't require us to bid this out. But given public interest in those types of things, I would probably advise that that would be advisable. But the other option would be is simply direct staff to negotiate a contract with Minot Vet Services, Minot Vet Clinic that is representative of our current relationship and and put that in place, that delineates that out. At the end of the day, there is no contractual relationship. Minot Vet Clinic could come in tomorrow morning and inform city staff that they're no longer providing those services to us. And we have no legal recourse to protect us in providing those services. So at the end of the day, my my recommendation is we need a contract in place to provide these services so that we can continue to meet the requirements of the city's own ordinances as well as state law and looking for direction from council of, you know, should we go through that bid process? And if so, as we develop that documentation to to solicit those bids, what service expectations is staff to include in that? Understanding that the more services we put in for requirement, the more likelihood that the cost of do of 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 that is going to increase. One of my other concerns is the fiscal impacts this this is going to have. Again, right now, we're paying $20,000 to $40,000 a year in animal care for a community this size. That's remarkably cost efficient. I can tell you that my previous community, we were budgeting probably, of course, we owned and operated an animal shelter. The city owned it and operated it and our annual budget was probably about $150,000 a year in processing, I would say probably about 300 to 350 animals a year through that facility. So my concern is, as we go through this and something I want to the council to keep mindful is it's it's great, we can talk about these these animal welfare issues and these types of things, but all those come with a cost. And what is what is our role as the city of Minot in that partnership? And then what's our fiscal responsibility to that? And again, if we put this out to bid. My thought is, is our current option isn't going to work. And that means that. Depending on what the response is, it could be either the same or less than what we're currently spending. But over time, as you add these services in, these costs are going to continue to go up, which has a fiscal impact and we have to address in our budgeting going forward. So with that, I'll be quiet and respond to any questions the council has with regards to this.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Appreciate all the the detail on this. Let's first start with questions for Mr. Stewart before we get into comments. Alderwoman Evans.
I have comments.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stewart on his presentation? Alderman Janser.
One question I have is, is the. You know, in in terms of the operation that we have in place today, is are the the, you know, the rescue groups and the adoption groups and and those folks able to work with the pound in that in the in the way that they want to or what's the situation there?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Janser. In response to that, so by by city ordinance, there's two situations. There's there's a an impoundment of an animal that we're aware of who the owner is, right? And we do, we do our best to reunite the animal with its owner. In the situation that either the the owner has has abandoned the animal or no longer wants it, or has been at the pound and no one has claimed it. Current city ordinance requires that that animal be retained for three days. And then at the end of three days, there's a couple of different options. Either a non resident of the city can come forward and pay the fees and take the animal. Or a resident can come forward, pay the fees, license the animal, and then take the animal. But at the end of three days, the city's obligation ends. And my understanding is with what we're currently billed from from the Minot Vet Clinic is we get billed for the first three days. After that point, if the vet clinic wants to retain that animal and enter into whatever partnership they can, but the city quits paying for it after three days. But at the end of the day, your current ordinance allows for those partnerships to work that rescue group or a foster group or the animal shelter can come forward. If they pay those fees, they can then take custody of those animals and find new new homes for those animals.
Any other questions at this time for Mr. Stewart? Thank you, Harold. Alderwoman Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I'm really glad we're talking about this tonight. So I am going to make a recommendation on or a recommendation on what the direction we provide. So yes, I I am in total agreement that we need a written contract. I think for any city services, it is best practices to have a written contract. It sort of concerns me as an attorney that we don't have one. But, you know, when we know better, we do better. So that, I think, hopefully, we're all in agreement in. I think that needs to be in the form of an RFP that's put out for competitive bids. I think we have a lot of interested parties with different capabilities. I don't even think we know what those different capabilities are in services. I don't think we're in a position to decide, yep, we just want pound services or yep, we want pound services and veterinarian services and spaying and neutering. What I would like to see is what is out there, what comes in. And, you know, so the RFP would include a spectrum of services from the very basic up to, you know, the deluxe and the the bidders would indicate their capacity to offer those services and the price that those services would cost. So we can see, right, like, okay, you know, a bid just for pound services is going to be X. But, you know, a bid for pound services plus X, Y, and Z is going to be this much. I think it helps us sort of decide what we can, what we want and what we can afford with taxpayer money. Second, I want the would like the RFP to have an opportunity for each of the bidders to, and we, I'm happy to provide the checklist, their ability to meet the guidelines that are set out by the Association of Shelter Veterinarians for standards of care in animal shelters. This is all those things like euthanasia, medical health and physical well being, facility design and environment. I'd like to see the folks who are bidding on this, you know, provide what their capacity is to meet those. I mean, certainly if we can, you know, meet many of those best practices, you know, or a bidder can, that that would be great to see. I think there should be the opportunity for the bidders to share their existing and potential partnerships and collaboration so we can see, you know, what that looks like, what relationships they have, what relationships they can foresee having if the contract was given to them. And I also do not believe at this time we are ready legally to make ACOs farmed out in this contract. I think we have to figure out, like you said, with the city attorney. If legally we can even do that with that, you know, because these are officers that can issue citations. And so I think that's not a like a easy like thing to transition over to. I'm not saying we never would have, you know, animal control officers with another entity, but right now, I think unpacking that is. Really not sort of what we want to do right now. And so keeping the ACOs with the police department, I think, is just best for right now and focusing the RFP on those qualities that I mentioned.
Further discussion?
Oh, and I have one more.
Continue.
And also having a portion in, I'll write this all to you, Harold, if we agree with this, but about their ability to house different kinds of animals, like almost having a checklist, not just the standard dogs and cats, but, you know, some folks have brought up, you know, their their ability to be able to house other animals that animal control officers come into contact with. So I guess the more information we can get from the bidders about what they can do, what kind of animals they can house that animal control picks up, what the cost would look like, whether that is cost per animal or a per annual, you know, thing. Just, I think the more information we have before us to decide what is the best, because I am absolutely convinced that everybody in this community is 150% committed to the safety and well being of the animals and especially the animals that animal control officers bring to the pound. These are very vulnerable animals. And so I, you know, I don't think anybody, we just want to figure out, like, if we can get more bang for our buck, you know, then let's let's see if that's even an option. But increasing the safety and well being of the animals within our control certainly is like a goal of mine and I would just like to see, you know, what is out there and what can be done for our animals.
Further comments. Alderman Padagula.
I think Carrie's idea is a very good one. And one of the things I like about it is that it would encourage and empower groups of citizens who care about animals to partner together and to work with the city to advance some common interests. You know, not we've this morning, for example, or since Sunday, I've received about half a dozen different, often very, very lengthy and thoughtful letters from people, emails from people proposing various things. So it's obvious that there's a lot of interest in improving animal welfare and there are a lot of people out there who can be part of the solution. And I think finding out in a systematic fashion who those people are, what those organizations are, and what they can bring to the table would be a very good way of going about this.
Alderman Janser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess to to my way of thinking, there's there's sort of a short term and a longer term thing here. You know, the the. I I agree with Carrie completely that we we should have a contract with whoever's doing this. And if presuming that Minot Veterinary Clinic is going to keep doing this for.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Pardon me?
I can't hear.
Presuming that Minot Veterinary Clinic is going to be doing this for a period of time, at least until we get something else worked out, it seems to me that it would make sense to put together a contract with them for the situation that currently exists and try and do that in fairly short order. Maybe it would be a, you know, month to month agreement or whatever, but have something in place there. And then. If if the council agrees that it's the right direction. Proceed along the lines to put out a more broad RFP and as as Carrie stated, you know, see what is out there, I guess.
Further discussion on the issue. Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe a question for Harold. Harold, what would be the turnaround on an RFP shot from the hip, having something ready to go out to the community to bid?
Mr. Stewart.
You're talking. The the biggest point will be the the staff drafting the RFP, making sure it represents everything. That could take a couple of months. Minimum, you have it out for bid for a minimum of six weeks. So, you know, there's three and a half months and then once that's done and it's the approval process and all those, which usually takes short order. So you're talking anywhere from. Three to three to four or five months.
Continue, Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. And and that the only reason I ask is just to for my own peace of mind, if we're if we're going to. Extend a contract with who we're already working with, if it's just belaboring staff to do something, if we're just going to RF do an RFP to open it up to the community beyond that. But I I I support getting a contract in place. I I I agree with Alderwoman Evans. I think this is, this is what we should do as a community, this should be a best practice to put this out to the public, to see what services we can provide. Again, I I just, I think that's the best route to go.
Any other discussion? Alderman Ross.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I. The emails that we received over the last 48 hours to 72 hours, I I think what I read into that is the Minot Vet Clinic has already got a solid relationship with some of these pet rescues. And I. It just, the thought that comes to mind is we're trying to fix something that's not broken. And I also think we're, as a city, we're trying to, yes, I agree, we need to have a contract and and I was going to recommend that we direct staff to negotiate with Minot Vet Clinic, a partner who has been there for us for decades. And if we put this out on an RFP, we're going to lose them. And we're going to basically. For the lack of a better term, kick them in the pants or spit in their face, saying, you've been with us for decades and they brought, they've they've done everything we've asked. They've even gone beyond that by working with some of these rescue shelters, rescue organizations. I just, I. Yes, we need a contract. I don't think, I think we ought to negotiate with Minot Vet Clinic and, you know, let's not create potholes for us to have to turn around and fix them again. Let's just, let's, let's, let's work with what we've got. I mean, I I think we're really overthinking this and and I think we got a great network of rescue shelters out there and, you know, let's let them work together with the Minot Vet Clinic to move forward with this. But let's not spit in the face of the Minot Vet Clinic that's been with us for years and years and years.
Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to to respond to some of that, I don't think anything is necessarily broken, but it doesn't mean that we can't make things better. Things don't have to break before we can make them better. And I think this is just an opportunity for us as a city to make things better. And it's not spitting in anybody's face. It's us doing our job to have a contract in place to do some, just because we didn't have a contract in place since the 90s doesn't make it right. We know something's wrong. We know something that we we should have been doing something better for for a long time and now we're doing that. We're fixing the problem. We're fixing that problem. That's the only problem that I see is the fact that we went. Twenty through, again, 1990 seems like yesterday sometimes, but. We've gone a long time without a contract in place and having something that we as a city of this size should be held to that standard, a higher standard of having something in place. Let's do what we do with with looking out for the best interests of taxpayer dollars. Let's put our RFP, see what services we can get back, what people are willing to provide. And it sounds like going to the Minot Vet Clinic, and again, I have nothing against my vet clinic, but it sounds like from the presentation, we're going to be at this table having this discussion in a little while due to retirement issues anyway. So. I don't want us to act surprised in a couple of years when they say, well, we got to find somebody new because somebody retired and there was no succession plan in place. And I don't know if that's the case, but that's what I've been told. So again, let's, we have, we have, we have a way to make things better, not fix them in front of us. Let's make them better.
Alderwoman Evans, and then we'll go to Alderwoman Olson.
Repeat what, you know, to Alderman Ross is that the point that, you know, we, the Minot Vet Vet has indicated impending retirement. So I'm just a, you know, the kind of person is let's, you know, this is going to be an issue whether it's today or in 12 months, you know? And I think the more time we can be methodical and thoughtful about this process and have, you know, it out in the community for bids, the better where we're not, our back isn't against the wall without any services. And I I don't think having a month to month contract with him until this is all in place is a bad idea. You know, if that is something that he is willing to do just for our protection, his protection, you know, animals, ensuring that there is a continuity of care for them as well.
Alderwoman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I truly believe some of the immediacy that we are dealing with right now is the tail wagging the dog. And the pun is intended there because we've had one organization that has come to us and said that things weren't working, but we've heard from a number of other organizations and individuals that say things are working. And so I think in the short term, I would be in agree with some, or in agreement with some of my colleagues in saying, yes, I think we need a contract, and I think the contract should be negotiated with the Minot Vet Clinic. But then looking out further, going through this RFP process to see what we can do, but, you know, maybe at least for six months, to know that we have a contract in place with the Minot Vet Clinic gives us that kind of sense of peace that we can go on day to day because there will be stray animals every day waiting for us to make a decision. And then just know what's out there as far as availability. I think the other sense that I get from individuals in our community is that they don't feel it is our responsibility as a body here or as citizens in the community to offer the very best care for stray animals. I think that we do have, you know, a limited amount of responsibility just offered through state law, but because there are other organizations that are available, such as the Service Valley Animal Center, that there are options that can be no-kill facilities. I don't think that that's something that the city of Minot needs to provide.
Alderman Ross, I thought I saw you.
I just want to make it clear, Alderman Pitner, that I am not against a contract. I'm totally for a contract, and that's, you know, I just don't want to make it sound like, you know, I don't want a contract, but when in fact I do.
I never said you were.
Further discussion on the matter? Perhaps as I did spend quite a bit of time with some of the aldermen in 2018, as we were going through our animal ordinances, I think a few folks on the council did at that time as well, we found how that once you dip your toe into the pool, it gets deep pretty quick. What my anticipation would be with this matter is that likely, once the toe is dipped on what that RFP is going to look like, the pool is going to get deep pretty quick on what some of the requests are, what some of the collaborations could and should be, or maybe shouldn't be. I would look at the time that the animal ordinance ad hocks took, which was about a year and a lot of staff time. I would anticipate about that much time to completely vet what needs to be, no pun intended there, what needs to be deeply looked at within this with all the different options. Get a contract, negotiate a contract in place for the meantime, and put that 12-month time period out there on what that RFP could and should look like, and give lots of time for, I think, open discussion and input from the public during that time. Sometime in the near future, put some of that ad hoc committee together once we've got a contract in place. Now, to the points being made here, I think by everybody, we could go out and look for a contract and find next week, we're sitting here having the discussion of an RFP anyway. We don't know that for sure. I think our police chief may have perhaps a bit of insight as I see a notice of discussion.
Listen to me, I just ripped my hearing aid out, but, Mr. Mayor and council, leading up to this, I did meet with the vet clinic just to get some idea of where we were at in our relationship and let them know this had nothing to do with anything they were or weren't doing. They're fully willing to go into a contract and negotiate that with us. So the only other thing I wanted to point out is, we've already budgeted for next year, so we have to be in that for 2022 anyway, and we budget that based on our history with the vet clinic. So we are working with that budget as we move into next year as well. So I guess I like the idea of having a little bit more time and not trying to rush into what an RFP looks like and being able to work through this over the next year in our budget, so.
Thank you for that insight. Alderman Padugula.
How much is in our budget?
The question was how much is in the budget?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padugula, I'm not positive what we budgeted in 2022, but we've run in that forty-five thousand range, so I would think it would probably be close to fifty thousand.
Thanks. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderwoman Olson.
Are you ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
All right. My motion would be that direct city staff to negotiate a contract with the Minot Vet Clinic for a 12-month period, and then, and bring that back to us for approval.
Second. Motion and a second. The motion is to negotiate with Minot Vet Clinic for a 12-month contract. Second on that discussion, I would perhaps look to the question of, is there any direction for staff to start the long process of RFPs or RFQs?
Yes, and I may leave that to Alderwoman Evans because she did have some ideas on that. I think that it is two steps, but as far as this motion, it would only be to negotiate the contract.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Would you be open to an amendment?
Alderwoman Evans.
Making that six months?
I think 12 months is more realistic, just knowing the speed of government. Unfortunately, I think 12 months is probably more realistic.
Final call for discussion. Alderwoman Evans.
What about, I mean, so, I get what you're doing, saying, but can we, like, I mean, I want the RFP to really happen, right? Like, so, I mean, if we're going to make that motion, I, it will be, to me, it will just be, okay, well, then we'll be sitting here 12 months, and be like, oh, shoot, maybe we need a RFP, right? Is also giving firm direction and guidance that an RFP, you know, that that's going to happen, and, you know, that, right? Because if we just leave here saying we're going to do this with Minot Vet Clinic for 12 months, we literally are going to be here in 10 months having the same discussion. And then it'll be another 12 months, right? And then maybe he's retired, you know? So, I mean, I would like to see an RFP.
Alderwoman Evans, I don't know if you're talking to the mic. We've got to remember to do that. Mr. City Manager.
I'd be willing to commit publicly in understanding the intention of the conversation tonight, even though the motion is with regards to negotiating a 12-month contract, should that approve, be approved and go forward, that as soon as that contract is done, staff will make it a priority to begin the creation of the RFP process. I will do what I can to engage potential partners in that conversation so that there is group participation in what that RFP looks like and what that means, and then brought back and presented to the council. And we will try to do that as expeditiously as possible. I don't want to commit to, we'll have it done in a year, because if we can get it done in six months, we'll get it done in six months, but if it takes a year, we'll take the year to do it. But I am willing to commit publicly that should the council move forward with this action tonight, staff understands the directive that an RFP is an expectation with public participation in that process.
For clarification, Mr. City Manager, when you say the contract is done, I think contract secured and then moved forward, not expired?
What I mean by contract is done, as in, we've negotiated a contract with Minot Vet Clinic, council's approved it, that is in place, next issue of priority would be the RFP.
Thank you for that clarification. Alderwoman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, and I would just like to kind of go off of what Chief Klug was saying, it will be helpful for us to have gone through that whole process so that as we go into the budget series next spring and summer, you know, we're fully aware of what the costs will be because we are essentially locked into costs for 2022. So that would help us, you know, knowing that we would be able to possibly have something in place for 2023.
Final call for discussion. Motion is again to direct staff to negotiate into or enter into a contract with Minot Vet Clinic for a period of 12 months. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That was the one item that we had under miscellaneous and discussion items. This is also an opportunity for any other items. Alderman Ross.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to give a quick shout out to a group of men that we welcome back to the city of Minot this last weekend with the Wiseman's PBR Bull Event. I had the opportunity to attend this event on Saturday night, and I sat with a bunch of kids and a bunch of family, and they really blew the roof off the auditorium. So I'd like to welcome back the Minot Wiseman to the city, their integrity, their hard work, their mission to raise money for kids. Man, it was on full display, and the money raised for the Y camp and the money raised for the, for the kids attending Y camp was incredible. So the Wiseman out there, big pat on the back, and welcome back to Minot. Thank you.
One last item, just for public information, there is a special session of the North Dakota Weather Slater's meeting that's going to be coming up in the not-too-distant future. Some of those details are slowly starting to surface on some of the federal funding and how the allocations are going to be pushed out, out to the local level. Staff is drawing up some ideas on our submissions that we are going to push forward for hopefully a little bit of share of that into capital improvement projects that actually fit within the guidelines set forth by the federal statutes for those dollars. So we'll be looking for that. And finally, I really hope to see this size of crowd when we do our first and second reading of our budgets next year. Not one person came to the second reading. So tongue-in-cheek, though, when we get to the RFP process or the RFQ, I truly hope that all of it can be done very respectfully, very collectively and collaboratively for the best outcome for all. Because as we saw in 2018, at some, at some points, things did get a little bit heated and a little bit contentious, but I think everybody's working for the best overall, and I know we can get there. So with that, any other items for the good of the order? Then we are up on our last item, and that is adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Pitner, second by Alderman Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.